All right, welcome. My name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you're not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. Tonight, we have two workshops, the Transportation Improvement Plan and Rural Housing Alternatives. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Owles, and Corbin. On Zoom, we have Commissioner Fritsch and Foster. With six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We're now ready to begin. Chair Spogen.
Hello, my name's Laurie Spogen, and I'd like to call to order the October 10th, 2023 meeting of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I'd like a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented.
I'd move to accept the agenda.
Second.
All right, let's do a verbal vote.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with six yes votes.
Also, prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the September 26th, 2023 meeting. There were a few edits made since the version that was sent and updated is displayed on the screen. Mindy, these were Jeff Scribner's edits, correct?
Yes, there were no substantive changes. There were some typos and adding some headings to things to break it up was all we did.
Okay. If we're willing to accept the notes as written, could I have a motion to entertain?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Yep.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain wasn't present at the meeting.
Aye.
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 The motion passes with five yes votes.
All right, are there any members of the public that would like to provide comments tonight?
There are no members of the public in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to provide public comment? Please raise your hand or unmute. Okay.
All right, then we'll head to tonight's first agenda item, which is a workshop on the Transportation Improvement Plan. There will be no public comments or questions taken during this workshop. Questions can be provided to the staff after, so I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Soderquist. I'm the county engineer. Took over this position about three weeks ago, and I'm going to do my best. This was supposed to be my getting my feet wet tonight and watching how we do this presentation typically, and I'm at tonight, so forgive me if I stumble through it. So every year, we put together a six-year transportation improvement program. It's part of our administrative requirements by the state. Once approved by the board, we submit it to the County Road Administration Board, who is our oversight for funding through the state. So part of developing this six-year transportation improvement program is to develop Lewis County's future transportation improvements and projects. We provide a comprehensive transportation program for the ensuing six-year, and again, we update it every year and provide that to the state. Projects created based on needs. We've been, for the last few years, responding to a lot of federally declared disasters and impacts to our roads. So we have a lot of FEMA projects. Once we get beyond those and responding to immediate disasters and needs, we try to work off of our program and identify projects based off of the functional class of the road, which is a federal classification that identifies kind of what level each street is, how big it is, how many people it's serving. And that functional classification for every road in Washington can be found on WashDOT's website. We do it based off of safety concerns, foreseeing a trend of accidents, whether it's intersections, runoff the road. We have, I will say that Lewis County is all of the projects that you ever did in engineering school, the word problems. That is Lewis County's environment for trying to build a road. We have a lot of steep terrain, especially out in East County, but even out in a little bit in West County. We have some great soils. We also have some very poor soils. We deal with a lot of water. And so it makes our projects very interesting, but it also creates a lot more projects for us because a lot of this information hasn't always been known or wasn't necessarily taken into consideration throughout the years. Our roads predate statehood. A lot of them do. We're constantly dealing with roads that were created back in the 1800s. Originally, we're wagon trails, and at some point, we're converted to car roads and would not be a desirable location based on today's standards, but it is where it is, and it creates a lot of unique how do I, unique opportunities for improvements. So we put a heavy effort on maintenance as part of our program because maintenance is a lot cheaper and has a lot more benefit when we stay on top of it than having to replace stuff. It's been a long time since I've seen it, but the state used to have a graph that kind of showed what a maintenance program that's adequately implemented can do for the life of a road where you kind of have this graph of when you create a road, you know, things eventually start going down. And if you hit that maintenance cycle, you can get it back up to nearly as good as it was when it was created, or, you know, right up at the top. But there's a certain point when you let those roads get down below that point, and you haven't provided any maintenance that the cost of repairing them or bringing them back up to that similar or same level is impossible without rebuilding it. And so we spent a lot of time and effort with our maintenance crews to be able to stay on top of that program. We have a very extensive chip seal program. We look at trying to rebuild about a mile a road each year with a program we call the Three R Program. Sometimes that's adding cement treated base to those programs or to those roads. Sometimes it's raising the road with about a foot of rock, heavy ballast, and putting a new top on it. That was what we did this last year down on Howe Road. Added a foot of rock and then about three tenths of top course and then chip seal over the top, and so those are kind of the big high points as far as how we look at programming our projects. Some of the other selection criteria will be accident history, constructability, and permits, which not so much constructability these days. Some of them are. Actually, we have a project up on Mead Hill right now. I don't know if you're very familiar with Mead Hill out in East County, off of Highway 12 near the Glanoma area. Climb, it's one of those wagon trails that climbs straight up the side of the hill. It's deeper than a one-to-one coming down. No walls or anything like that currently, and we're having a failure up there as a result of FEMA federally declared disaster up there that we're in the middle of trying to fix. So constructibility does become an issue at times because the preferred alternative for that project right now is a soldier pile wall that is going to be very expensive, but thankfully, we've got some federal support to help us deal with that. Permits are probably one of our biggest hurdles that we have to get over with our projects. Back to the story problem is one of the other things we have in Lewis County is a lot of cultural history. So just about, I shouldn't say just about anywhere, but a lot of places where roads are was based off of, again, wagon trails or paths, walking paths that eventually got upgraded to, you know, to the next level and the next level. That meant a lot of trade. That meant a lot of history going along those routes, and so it's something we have to address as part of every time we turn dirt in the ground to make sure that we're not disturbing or we're adequately addressing those cultural concerns. I mentioned water. Most of the water in Lewis County, including our ditches, a lot of times have fish in them. That creates a whole nother series of challenges for us to be able to overcome and include as part of our projects. So permitting is a big hurdle for us to get these projects through and approved and understanding what those costs are for the roads. We do a pavement rating system that is also required as part of our County Road Administration Board requirements. We drive the roads on a cycle. I don't remember offhand exactly what that cycle is, but we drive every road in the state or in the county on that cycle and rate that pavement condition and overall condition of that road and use that to help inform our program. We also include what we call a maintenance offset so that if the maintenance of a certain section of road is becoming overly cumbersome, that it's that time to rebuild it or create a more substantial repair for that section of roadway. We do it off of traffic counts, so as developments occurring and we're seeing more constituents within a certain area, we're using that information to inform, you know, where priorities might be shifting to and become more important than a lesser traveled road. We have support by other plans, which means, does the project have connection to other federal, state, or local plans? We've been focusing a lot these last few years, especially with the amount of money that's being put out at the state and federal level for fish passage programs. The reason that's important to us is, and it gets tough to explain that to some folks, is because it's at a very finite spot on the road. Oftentimes, we're fixing or repairing less than a quarter mile of road. That quarter mile repair, on average, is costing us about a one and a half million dollars to replace a culvert. That used to be thirty-six to, so three feet, maybe five feet, maybe eleven feet, and we're, a lot of these are becoming twenty to thirty-foot crossings based off of current guidelines back to that permitting hurdle that we have to overcome, and that's not a choice. We have to do that, and if we don't take advantage of these programs while they're available, all of that's going to be on us. Right now, we're completing them for, on average, probably about less than 10% of county investment for those one and a half million dollar projects. So it's in our best interest that while it's a very small section of road, it is a very high-dollar section of road, and so continuing to look into these programs and plans is is a big part of how we're kind of programming our dollars right now. Some of the other ones that we have going are North County Industrial Access that the state's been a part of on and off for the last few years, looking at new interchange in the north part of Centralia, up near the county line areas. There's been some various iterations of it. But again, the state's participating in those, and while we have the other players at the table, we need to take advantage of those opportunities and not let them go to waste. That kind of leads into the supplemental funding as well. We have a lot of federal programs that we participate in. One of them is the Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG for us, that we get an annual allocation from the, or through the state of federal dollars to apply to roads. We have a Transportation Advisory Committee and a Transportation Strategy Council that includes the county, the city of Centralia, the city of Chehalis, the city of Napa Vine, and one mayor representative for the small counties east and one mayor representative for the small counties west, I think is what it's supposed to be in there, but for the last few years, we have not had a mayor from the east side participating. But what that is, is we vote on together of what the needs are for the county for the type of roads that actually qualify for that funding and determine where to spend that. This upcoming year, we are going to be spending that on Centralia Alpha with about a mile rebuild out there, out near Thousand Trails, and the Sun and Opelt Road Intersections. The city in Centralia has done a couple of projects the last couple of years that they've had prepared to meet those obligations because if we don't spend that money, the state will start pulling that money and give us less and less. So again, those become priorities. We put in for, I think it's biannually, a safety program, highway safety improvement program. We again have it based off of a priority list. We've been going through and flattening side slopes and adding guardrail to the Centralia Alpha Corridor for the last two years. This next round of funding that we just got awarded a couple of months ago was about $2.2 million that we'll be looking to finish out the Centralia Alpha Corridor with that slope flattening and guardrail, and then moving on to Jackson Highway, the entirety of that as well. Again, those are based off of a priority rating system, ADT, the severity of the slopes and hazards that exist. And then the last part is geographic equity. We are a very large county. One of the largest in the state. We have just over a thousand miles of road on over 1,200 roads. So that kind of indicates how many short little roads that we have as well that span all the way from the top of White Pass, all the way out past PL and Dode, and trying to spread out that work as well to make sure that we're not focusing it just off of where the loudest voices are either, and that we're spreading it to everybody in the county and making sure that they're having quality program out where they're at as well. So every year, we have a tip evaluation process that includes going and sending this to the board. It has to be to the Board of County Commissioners prior to budget adoption. Our budget is separate from the general fund budget, but it is all part of the same budget adoption process. And so we present this tip and our planned activities based off of the criteria I've described to the board for their approval. They always do have the opportunity to provide input in this. One of the other things that we really haven't, I haven't touched on is a bridge program. We have, I think, the third largest bridge program in the state, and we're one of the smallest 22 counties in the state. They do kind of divide the way counties are separated in Washington. There's 39, and you have the top 17 that have a significant population, and then there's the small 22. And we have, I think, the third largest bridge program in the state. And it's only getting bigger with all of these fish passages because any crossing over 20 feet is considered a bridge that is included in that program. So the final, the tip finalization is through the board after we present the information to them and again, before the budget adoption process. I've kind of touched on some of it, but our funding sources include property tax, motor vehicle fuel tax, and then we have the federal and state programs, which is BRAC, that's our Bridge Replacement Advisory Committee, STP, Surface Transportation Program, RAP, our Rural Arterial Program, CAP, County Arterial Preservation Program, federally Emergency Relief Program, which that program is similar to FEMA, but it's on certain classifications of roads. So when they reach a certain classification, FEMA won't fund them. That all goes through FHWA. The bank stabilization that we did a portion of out on Shorey Road last year and will be finalizing this next year was done through that Emergency Relief Program. We had another one that we just are in the final stages of completing right now out on Garard Creek Road as you head out towards Gray's Harbor and Oakville. Funny enough is that one's classified higher than some of these other roads that are closer to town, but it has to do with our connectivity to Gray's Harbor and Thurston County and the sorts like that. And then when you're below that certain classification, then we go to FEMA when we have these federally declared disasters. There's a transportation improvement account. Some of these other programs specific to fish passages, salmon recovery funding board. We also have a large amount of federal land within Lewis County, especially out in the east county, so we have access to the Federal Lands Access Program. We have an active project with them right now for the Skate Creek North bridge that goes over the Nisqually and heads up towards just before SR7. We share ownership of that bridge with Pierce County, but the maintenance with per agreement is on us, and then they have the annual inspection and minor upkeep of it. But we were awarded a grant through that Federal Lands Program to do some repairs on the south side of, on our side of the bridge for the approach to it. And then there's the 09 distress county funds. So some of our 2023 projects that we completed, we did a 2021 county safety program. That's that guardrail that I was mentioning earlier along, and slope flattening along Centralia Alpha. Ferry Road Bridge Repair, we're getting ready to complete that here later this month, but it will be complete by the end of the year. A few years ago, an overheight load struck one of the cords on that bridge and damaged it. And so it's been load restricted for quite a few years. And so we're finally getting to the, able to go out and repair those members and get it back up to full functional. Garard Creek Road scour repair, I just mentioned, it was another one where the creek last year with high water, or two years ago with high waters, came in close to the bank, started causing some sloughing and cracking in the road. One of our fish passage projects was out on Kruger Road this year. I don't remember exactly what the culverts were, but they were about five foot or something like that and replaced with a 29-foot box culvert, I think it was. Out on Little Hannahford Road off of Salzer, as you, we had a major slide out there that shut down one lane of the road for the last year and a half. We got that completed this year. Pigeon Springs Roadbank Stabilization, similar, the roadway embankment sloughed off into the New Waukam. I think that's the south fork of the New Waukam out there. And we were able to put in a gravity block wall and get both lanes of the road open back up. Part of our Three R Maintenance Program, we paved the first mile of Pigeon Springs Road. It was in pretty bad shape with the chip seal. I don't know if you've ever had a chance to be out on Pigeon Springs Road, but that's one of those wagon trails that went right along the river. In today's design standards, I would have never been that close, but we deal the cards or we play the cards we're dealt, so. And then we completed about 105 miles of chip seal this year, which also included a little bit of work for Gray's Harbor County and City of Centralia. I mentioned BRAC program. We have quite a bit of work that's been put out or funding that's been put out through that program the last couple of years, and we've been trying to take advantage of it as fast as we can. And so we've got about six projects right now that are included in that. King Road, near Lake Creek on the Boyesford side, we're doing a scour repair project for that one. Sergeant Road, we're doing a bridge scour project. Sen Road and Wildwood, two more, scour. And then we had just under general bank stabilization, we had Garard Creek and Shorey Bank Road, Shorey Road Bank Stabilization Projects. I mentioned the culvert replacements. We have a whole priority culvert system, our priority rating system for the culverts. Again, we're trying to go after this fish passage money and keep on top of it, but it doesn't just include our fish passages. We still have a lot of culverts that fortunately are not on fish streams that we're able to replace past practices, and again, probably before anybody realized it, is we have very high acidic soils in Lewis County. For a long time, we used to put a lot of metal pipe in the ground. We're finding that that pipe is rotting out after about 20 to 30 years. And so we've got pipe that just have no bottoms in them, which when we get to heavy water events, start scouring out all around it and then creating problems with the road. And so those culverts are also included in our culvert replacement program as well. Federal Forest Road Improvements, so we do have agreement with the feds to do improvements on some of our higher-traveled federal forest roads, Skate Creek being a big one, that we try to help them out because there is a county benefit to be able to connect the north part of the county up there. I don't know how familiar you are with that portion, but we do have a portion of Lewis County that runs all along the south side of SR7 as you head up towards Mount Rainier up there that you can only access through Pierce County. And so when Skate Creek is closed, the only other option is to go up SR7 through Morton, turn and head out 702, sorry. South side of 702, we have a whole portion east of L B there, so. We do participate with the feds to make improvements on those federal roads that are a benefit to the county. I mentioned the FEMA repair projects. Historically, this hasn't been included in our STIP, but it's, these last few years, we've decided to start including it because it is a major portion of what we've been doing for about the last 15 to 16 years, especially since 2007. And right now, we've got somewhere around 15 or 16 active FEMA projects with about 10 of those having been new within the last five years. And so it's just constantly trying to stay on top of those in addition to all of our regular work that we're doing as well. Back to maintenance, we do, again, through a lot of the BRAC program, preventative bridge maintenance. The current projects we have approved through them is Hining Road, Galvin, and the two Galvin Road Bridges across the Chehalis. They're just east, west of UNFI in Centralia there. Well, they're in the county, but just west. So we'll be doing some preventative bridge maintenance there, and then our countywide Three R Program, that's that program that I mentioned where we try to cement treat some roads, rebuild the roads. We try to do about a mile of it at least a year to just stay on top of these things and try to put fixes in place that will have very long-lasting effects. We have countywide paths and trails that, that's money that's given to us by the state that we work to, we have to spend on a regular basis. We've designed a project out near Swafford Pond for pedestrian improvements out there. I don't know if you've ever had a chance to be out there, especially during fishing season, but it gets a little busy. Everybody parking on that very narrow shoulder, so trying to create some identified space out there along with an actual path along the roadway to separate the pedestrians from the vehicular traffic. And then we also use it to maintain existing trails. We have another program that is separate from the federal safety program, our own countywide miscellaneous safety and guardrail. Last year, we added some guardrail up on Series Hill Road as you climb up on the far end of it in the gravel stretch where I think the perception for a long, nothing really changed on the road, but the perception for a long time was it was safe because there was a lot of trees and you really couldn't see how steep the hill was, and then they went through and logged it, and it became very, and right, wrong, or indifferent, a tree is going to catch you probably before you get to the bottom of the hill, and when they're all gone, it's a different safety scenario. And so we added that guardrail up along that stretch. So we have that program as well. Taking advantage again of federal money is we're doing some railroad switch upgrades in Centralia near Blakesley. We're partnering with the City of Centralia on that and the Puget Sound and Pacific Railroad together to try and upgrade those switches. Currently, they're a manual switch where the train operators have to, they pull up to the siding, they have to hop out, flip the switch, move the train, hop back out, flip the switch back. If you've ever tried to travel Reynolds Road, when one of those trains is blocking, it's not a quick adventure. And so this upgrade will make it to where they can operate those switches from the cab and as they're pulling up. So hopefully, that's going to help improve some of the delays there on Reynolds. And then we also have some grant money, again, through the state/feds, and that we're working with Centralia and PSAP again to add some track extensions just on the south side of the port there near Foron Road where, to create more capacity while they unhitch these trains and again, clear Reynolds Road out quicker, trying to eliminate some of those delays. Trying to eliminate some of those delays. I think that pretty well covers the heavy highlights of the things that we're looking to do over the next couple of years along. As well as next year and covered what we did this year. You guys have any questions?
Just giving you all a chance. I got a few things here, Jeff, let me start from the bottom, move to the top. That Series Hill Guard Rail. If you hadn't mentioned that, I wouldn't have remembered it, but I will tell you now that you mentioned that because I've been up there since then. That guard rail has, will save a life. Somebody was going to die going off that hill. So that's insightful, that's really cool that somebody thought ahead. Does Ann Weckback work for you?
Yes.
Yeah, she is the most productive and efficient culvert, grant writer, fun to getter. And I'm just telling you this in, in the Habitat Work Group, I'm the Lewis County rep for the Habitat Work Group, so I get to watch them all work from all the agencies. That woman produces. And I get to go and score the projects around the county and down in Gray's Harbor. So I get to see them all. And if Ann has one fault, it is that she is too soft spoken and does not beat her drum because her projects are always perfect. I'm a salmon guy, the stuff we're working on in Lewis County is incredibly important to me. The damage that was done was done and it was law to fix it. And we have a certain amount of time to fix it. And the fact that we kicked that can down the road and the forest, the loggers fixed it all ten years ago up in the hills. Right? So it's going to get fixed, it's good, spend the money, do it, we waited. The tip seal, my daughter used to work on your tip seal crew, they're a great bunch of people. Here's my last thing, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. I never paid attention to Mr. Hill last year when he was here and then I had a personal issue out in Randall. Guy needed some help and I was, wanted to build a road up the side of one of these steep hills he's talking about. I went down to the county to ask a couple of questions and I had drawings and I read the code, I know what it says. And I asked the question, can I get up the hill or can I not get up the hill? Instead of sending me on my way, they said, Mr. Jeff there and his compadres, they said, hey, why don't we meet you out there? So they scheduled a time, drove an hour to Randall to answer my questions, walked around the mountain with me to advise me how to move forward. And this was a client, a customer, a citizen of Lewis County who needed these guys' time. They spent a half a fricking day with that list he's got in front of him, so. Welcome, you're doing a good job, you had a great mentor, keep it up.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments on Ann, she's definitely one of my rock stars. She's got it down to a science and one of the funding sources I didn't have listed in here that just popped into my head as he said that is the feds this last year and through the state came out with a program called PROTECT. Don't ask me what it stands for, I know that it's a big, long acronym. But they worked with the Salmon Recovery Funding Board to try and deliver these funds. And we're given a very short timeline to try and produce projects so that they could show that the funding was worth it and that it could be spent. I think it was in southwest Washington, there were eleven projects that were awarded. We had three of those. And that was, or maybe we had five of the eleven million. I know we got awarded three projects, I don't remember which number it is, but long story short, that's, that is a huge kudos to Ann and all of the work that she's done to prioritize these. And again, it's not a matter of if we have to replace them, it's when we have to replace them. And the more we can take advantage of these funding opportunities, the better off we're going to be as a county road department.
One last thing, when she's done with that project and you guys are buttoning it all up. My request is that we make certain there is education on that project that it tells people salmon go up that stream. Because you're working in the foothills like over there by Logan Hill where it looks like a salmon stream. But if we don't educate them, the three miles between there and the river get destroyed. We need to have people thinking about the salmon highway for three miles and then getting up into the hills. And that's where anything we can do to let citizens know the salmon still exists in every stream running across these plains, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, excellent report, appreciate it. I've had the advantage of sitting on this county citizens budget committee, so I've been able to track what a lot of the things that you've said tonight. And I also sit on the Chehalis Basin Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. And as you are very much aware, the flood retention facility that's proposed must go hand in hand with the aquatic species restoration. So I'm also very concerned about, you know, stream restorations, culvert replacements and so forth. Do you have a long list? Or did I hear you say that you have a list of priorities when it comes to culvert replacements? And are you working in conjunction with the Chehalis Basin Board and the Flood Control Zone District?
Ann works off a list that the basin has developed and she's helped develop it. Every culvert that has to be replaced in Lewis County is categorized. She'll hand you the number, whether it's, if she's replacing it, it has to be high on the list.
Yeah, okay.
To get the points to score it, thanks for asking.
All the, the dollar amount is staggering to replace all the culverts. Do we have an updated total and are we, you know, as we check them off, are we reducing the total that's, that's needed? Or, you know, is it kept, is that kind of record keeping kept in that amount of detail?
Possibly.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that question offhand.
I'm just anxious to see the progress, that's all, if it could be demonstrated, that's all.
Yeah, so that's a great question, kind of what Bob mentioned is Ann has a map of every culvert that we've replaced and from the fish side of things, the priority based off of habitat upstream, downstream, what the blockages are. She's constantly reaching out to the adjacent landowners to figure out if they're on board with the project, that is often another hurdle for us. Because a lot of these funding sources require property owner support. And so we don't always get that, which creates hurdles for us. But some of these federal funding opportunities that are coming out allow us to approach it a little bit differently. The other part that is beyond the habitat side of things is the maintenance side of things. Again, we have aging infrastructure. And so balancing that out with what the maintenance needs are versus being able to approach a whole priority reach that feeds into the New Waukam and the Chehalis. And then she also has the exact same thing for the Cowlets Basin, but it's a whole different side of the same group. But the Cowlets Basin is out of Vancouver and then the Chehalis Basin is up here. And it's much more competitive in the Cowlets Basin than it is in the Chehalis Basin as far for us compared to the adjacent agencies, because we're dealing with everybody that feeds into the Columbia for the Cowlets. Versus a still sizable system, but smaller system with the Chehalis.
So if the green light is given for the flood retention facility, that also kicks in the aquatic species restoration plan because the two have to go together or none at all. And so if there is a sudden influx of state money to cover culvert replacement and stream restoration and so forth. Do we have the staff available to us to, to mount a major assault on this? You know, once the log jam is, is financial log jam has come unblocked?
No, we don't. I can tell you we're about as maxed out as we can possibly be right now with the staff I have available. We are managing about ten consultants doing work for us. In addition to this list that of what we're getting completed on our own. Staffing is an issue statewide, I was just talking to Eric about this before the meeting. It's not a Lewis County Public Works issue, it's not a Washington State issue, it's a nationwide issue. The state is actually trying to give us money to do projects on their behalf. Thurston County recently took on, well, not fish passage or, or habitat stuff, but recently took on three projects on behalf of the state. Because they don't have the staff to be able to deliver those projects. We're hearing from our consultants that they're tapped out and they don't have hardly any more staff. I mean, everybody's going after this stuff, gangbusters and so the short answer is no. And the tough thing is, is Western Washington unique, is unique in our habitat restoration program compared to the rest of the nation. So it's not like I can go get some other big consultant out of California, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, New York. That our regulations and our requirements to meet are held at a much higher standard than most of the rest of the nation. I feel confident in saying that.
So basically, once the log jam has been breached, then we need to try to measure this program out so that we can tackle it with existing resources, it sounds like.
Yeah, and while worrying about all this other stuff as well, because Ann just told me the other day is that the Washington State Association of County Engineers provided some money to WDFW to continue evaluating various culverts and barriers. And the list in Lewis County alone is an additional fifteen hundred culverts to what have already been identified as fish passage issues. Large majority of those turning into bridges.
Thank you. My two other questions are, I recently took a trip to Yakima on Highway fourteen. I was absolutely appalled, the condition of that road, that falls under the state, doesn't it, Highway fourteen? Or is that county road jurisdiction?
I'm not familiar with Highway fourteen, are you talking twelve or fourteen?
Twelve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, twelve is the state. Federal highway as well.
Yeah, okay. Portions of that road felt like a third world country and, you know, it's, it's, it's absolutely out of control, it's got to change. Sorry, just my soapbox. My last question then has to do with I five, which I know is federal, but do you, does Lewis County have any say? Or any mechanism to, to request a third lane through the county to stop this doggone bottlenecking in our county? It's a road hazard, it's a safety issue, you talk about safety issues, you know, we've got them in the county, no doubt, but I five, you know, and it's getting worse every year, I've lived here seven years and each year I've lived here, I five has gotten progressively worse. My wife travels from where we live on Kirkland Road to the Chehalis, the Centralia Hospital as a nurse. You know, and she has to leave, it's almost like we lived in Vancouver and, and we're trying to, you know, travel to work in Portland like I used to do. You know, it's becoming Portlandish around here with the freeway and the side roads, you know, can't handle the traffic. People divert going through town. It's just becoming a nightmare. Do we have a mechanism to say, we need to run this thing up the flagpole a little bit higher to try to see if we can't get I five widened? And I know it's not really our jurisdiction, but it's my other transportation soapbox. We can do a lot of things to fix a lot of roads around Lewis County. But if, if, if we have a bottleneck, you know, on I five like we do, you know, then that's going to affect the economy of the whole county.
I will say that I think it's annually, we meet with the state and they ask us what we would like. And my annual ask is Rush Road and a third lane. So that has been my annual ask.
Then I will vote for you.
I will say on the latest outlook that I saw that both of those got pushed out past twenty thirty nine. So I think your avenue is to contact your local legislators. Again, like as you said, it is out of our control, but I ask from it, from, from our perspective, I know that our area engineer for WashDOT has similar concerns. But it is out of our control.
Thanks for asking, keep asking, but you know, related to Rush Road, you know, I, I travel that every day just about. And there's no reason why the, the, the off ramp going either way to choose your direction, you know, is wide enough for two lanes. And it would be nice to have one lane dedicated to a left-hand turn lane and a, the other one, a right-hand turn lane. You know, to allow more people to get off the freeway safely, be able to navigate that intersection. And the trucks, you know, are just one right after another and sorry for the day that somebody needs an ambulance, you know, around there and they're delayed an extra five or ten minutes.
Yesterday, you know, backed up because they're doing some kind of work up, up on the freeway north of Centralia. I don't know exactly how far north it got before it stopped. But I had somebody count the trucks from there, which I think it was maybe even around Tumwater. Back down to Chehalis and guess how many trucks? Eight hundred.
Wow, I can't believe it's that little, to be honest.
And I got to thinking when I knew you were coming in tonight, I thought, you know, every time the freeway stops up and we get all those big old trucks going down Jackson Highway and through the middle of downtown Chehalis. What, what is that doing to your road? I mean, do we have to let them off the freeway or could we just say no trucks allowed?
Yeah, no. So Tucker Road for a couple of years down near Highway twelve headed towards Toledo and Jackson Highway was load restricted to certain trucks for, but for the most part, I mean, we're public streets, we, we allow all legal loads. The reason that that portion was load restricted for a while was because of the damage we were seeing out there. We got two thirds of it repaved a couple of years ago. We have about a third in the middle that was in the best shape that we did not repair at that time, but it did lift the load restriction. It's when those trucks come off the highway, when we had the big flooding in last year. Last year, yeah. I, I spent the day just driving around trying to help out our maintenance crews, make sure that if there was a spot that we hadn't got to close down a road or something because of hazards. That I could radio into them, which actually they did awesome and beat me to every single one of them. But it also became an exercise for me to figure out how I could get from North County to South County absent a Jackson Highway. And it was literally impossible for me. Between the traffic because of all the truckers and other related traffic, just following Google and trying to find an alternative route around. We're plugging up our roads that were not meant, well, I shouldn't say weren't meant, but in the volume that they were in, were not meant for those trucks. Because they were getting down to, I don't remember the name of the dairy, but the dairy right at the bottom of six oh three near Twin Oaks before you get to Highway six. They were having to stand out there for, I got to imagine about eight hours sitting there helping trucks turn around because, and then the ones that were waiting in the backup to try and turn around beforehand were like on Dever East and stuff that were ties into six oh three there, we're backing around. I was sitting behind one of them, watching him try to back around the corner and I thought he was going over because he's going over the shoulder down through the ditch and the whole trailer is leaning and all that stuff, but. So yeah, every time that happens, that damages our roads, not just from the flood event, but from traffic going on the portions of the road that it wasn't meant to be.
Do you go to, when you go to county commissioners with, with your business here tonight that you've been talking about? Do you ever try to get more in your budget to retain the, the people that you've trained that leave? Because they, because there is such a shortage and they're, so they're going where they can get paid better? Do you ever try to make your case on that?
Yes, it's a discussion. It's a sensitive one, so I'll leave it there.
We discussed it on the citizen budget committee a number of times, you know, there's, there's a lot of needs in the county.
Well, it must be very frustrating to put in the training and then.
It was that way in the federal government too, you know, one to, one agency will train you up, you know, to be a really good employee. And then another one will come along and offer you a promotion to go to work for them, you know, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I was telling Eric before the meeting, my honest to God philosophy with my employees. Philosophy with my employees is I'll train you to leave. I hope that you stay because you enjoy what you're doing, that you feel fulfilled. But I'm willing to train you to leave because for what time I do have you, that means I'm going to get the best out of you. But that we have created an environment and a fulfillment in the work that we do that you want to stay. I can't always guarantee that for everybody. They've all got different needs and, and responsibilities to your own self and families. But I can control what I can control and that's the environment we're trying to create in public works. So.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate it. And thanks for tonight.
You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah, you did. Gave us very nice. Rundown of what's going on over there.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, so let's go to the second agenda item for tonight, which is a workshop on the rural housing alternative. Again, we're not going to have any public comments, but Eric.
Thank you. Let me turn on my video here so that people who are watching from, um, can see me. Hmm, just a second. It is, oh, good. Is it turning off again? It's turning off, isn't it? Yeah, maybe do. I'm tired of doing this. Okay. So now I, oh, man, okay, I give up. Sorry, Gretchen and Corbin. I guess you're just gonna see the black Eric Eisenberg nothing. All right, so we, that was a great discussion you guys had on transportation. Honestly, it was longer than I was expecting and this presentation is long too, so I'm going to try to. Go expeditiously through it because I want to have, give you time to talk about it afterwards and still get out of here at a reasonable time. But unfortunately and fortunately, our industry stakeholder work group was, I would say ridiculously informative about this topic. So there's lots of stuff to talk about. So for anybody who doesn't know, I'm Eric Eisenberg, Housing Infrastructure Specialist for Lewis County. And I'm here to talk about the Industry Stakeholder Work Group, which was part of the Rural Housing Alternative Project. Next slide, please. So today I'm going to give you a, a little bit of context and recap. You've heard this before, so I'll try to go through it quickly. Just, but it's important to know like what are we doing and why before you start talking about the new stuff. And then I'll talk to you, of course, about what we actually did with the work group, the takeaways from the first session, which were numerous. The sample development scenarios that the group considered, I'll give you a taste of what they did. And then I'll show you some of the financial implications of what they did before I talk to you about our conclusions. Next slide, please. All right. So again, just for context, because we're always making stuff that's in a record, right? So the context that we're doing this in is that we're trying to increase housing affordability and availability in the county. Because our housing costs are rising here a lot faster than incomes. In particular, they seem to be rising faster in rural areas. So between two thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-two, it rose a hundred and eighty something percent in Centralia, which is bad enough. But it was more in Mossy Rock and it was more in Curtis and it was more in Packwood. So it seems like the more rural you get, the more prices are rising faster, which is problematic for the rural area as distinct from the urban areas. Also, our housing size and our housing needs are mismatched. We got a whole lot of single family residences in the county, almost eighty-six percent of our housing stock, I think. Is a detached, single family residence and a lot of those houses, more than half of them, almost two thirds are three bedroom houses. But more than two thirds or about two thirds rather of our households have only one or two people. So we got a whole lot of three bedroom houses, but not families that aren't big enough to fill them up, which means you got too much house and it's too expensive. Over, uh, so this, over the course of the whole state, the Department of Commerce. You know, the, the Growth Management Act, it's all about urban housing growth. The bulk of our housing growth is going to be in compact urban development in the urban area. Um, and that is the sort of concentration of Washington State law and practice on this topic, and I want you to know that we're doing that too. You guys saw, right? We had that population and housing allocation and the vast, vast majority of our population growth. The vast, vast majority of our housing growth is going to be in the urban area. A small portion of it is going to be in the rural area. So what we're really talking about here is what is the small rural complement that we can do that's in our power? That will complement that urban housing growth that is the main event in Washington. And we, what, what you have previously had from us on this is that we had a big report about what sort of constraints we face in the rural area. Both practical and legal from the Growth Management Act, from other laws. I wrote you a memo about why we can't just do R D D two point five instead of R D D five because it's problematic from a regulatory standpoint. Um, and also how it may not work as well as trying to find a way to make smaller units anyway, and there's actually some data now that you'll see that might factor into that. And basically the name of the game is, can we find any GMA compliant options that we could use in our rural areas? As just, you know, our little piece of the puzzle as, as it goes, as, as urban housing growth goes on. Next slide, please. So as you remember, this was the concept, right? Is that you have a, a visual form? That is meant to look like our rural housing in Lewis County does already, which is that you have a big lot, like our rural lots are large, they're over five acres. That the development is clustered in a small area of that lot. Here we chose one point two five acres, an acre and a quarter as a benchmark. That the, any buildings in that little acre and a quarter, that they share usually a primary access, it's served by well and septic. That the lot doesn't get divided to some area smaller than five acres. It usually stays large. And that it, it is, dissipates stormwater across the whole area of the lot. So our concept was to use that same form. And to use that same clustering and interdependency logic that you see from ADUs, but potentially allow more housing units. Here, what's depicted is three housing units that are attached, stick-built residences in the same space that you would normally find one. Large residence in the rural area in Lewis County. Next slide, please. But something that's new for you today. Is that you'll see as we go through this, that the financial suggested that manufactured housing. Would be much more cost effective for this than stick-built housing because the cost to build is so high and the cost to build is the largest portion by far. Of the costs of doing this work. Um, and so here we have a depiction of the exact same type of scenario. It's still clustered, interdependent and form-based. But instead of being a stick-built contiguous residence, it's three small detached manufactured homes. Because we think that's maybe a fair, a fair depiction of what you might see from these. Of course, you still could do conjoined units. There's no reason you can't. But we just wanted to make sure that people saw that this was also something that could be done with this form. Next slide, please. But you guys asked whether anyone could ever build one of these. So did the county commissioners and I believe Mr. Russell actually said, it's easy to sell something that you ain't got. Um, I'm paraphrasing, but so I, the question is, are these the Brooklyn Bridge? Are we selling you something that you can, you don't own, right? So next slide, please. That is what the Industry Stakeholder Work Group was meant to study, right? That we gather together these people in these different roles. These are people who work in Lewis County. They have long experience in our actual development. Field here doing residential development and their goal was to vet the viability of this RHA. First by reacting to the, you know, mock-up, the sandbox regulations about how it might work. And then by doing sample developments as an intellectual exercise where they would actually talk about developing them on real world parcels. They would generate pro formas, budgets related to those things, and then they would talk about whether you could finance them and how. Next slide, please. Okay, so we had three sessions with them. The first session, we went over a lot of preliminary stuff about the project. It was the second and third where we did the sample developments. And thus the first session alone had a bunch of really important takeaways that are summarized here. The first was that they gave us a laundry list. Now, if you remember, I, you guys have seen a big report from me about all this work, right? Uh, I, I hope some of you had time to read the whole thing, but I understand if you didn't, that's why it had the executive summary section, et cetera. The list of things that they said they would care about when they were talking about how to develop these. What I thought was so surprising was that it was strikingly similar to the stuff that was in our initial report from February. Those, it was confirmation that those things that we identified as being rural housing constraints. Were really on the mind of development thresholds in the rural area and that they were the same list largely, which was great. It shows that this work. Is actually headed in the direction that would be needed to be headed for this to be feasible. The second thing that they pointed out was that they perceived that there would be demand for these developments, a question that everyone had, us and you. We had heard from the Realtors that there would be demand, but these were now a much broader cross-section of people in the community, Realtors and developers, et cetera. They immediately thought of family compounds as being something that this might be useful for. These were people who had been asked either on the septic side, on the building side, on the engineering side, to help work on family compounds where people. Wanted to provide housing for their whole family in Lewis County and many times they'd had to say no. Because there wasn't a good way to do it. They saw that this was an avenue in which that could happen, so they thought that would be an area where there would be demand. They perceived that there might be other forms as well because it was flexible, um, and that was sort of new in the rural area. But family compounds were the thing that immediately sprang to their mind. Number three, they quickly identified that there would be some financing constraints that would matter to these, because if you're talking about manufactured homes. A Fannie Mae conventional mortgage loan is not allowed. If you have multiple manufactured units on the same property. That's not true for stick-built units. You can have one to four stick-built units and it's just a still conventional mortgage. But if it's Fannie Mae and it's manufactured, you're outside the guidelines if you have more than one manufactured home. So they, they alerted us that we need to care about that going forward. They identified some ways in which the sandbox regulations did not mean to them what they meant to us and those needed to be updated, which was very good. They also gave us some tips about how to make our sample development scenarios more realistic. So, um, for example, we had talked about a barn dominium example where someone had a house and they had a barn and you wanted to make barn dominiums. The civil engineer said, most of the barns in Lewis County that are pole barns could not be converted. What you'd need to do in order to make them building code and fire code compliant and energy code compliant would be so great. That no one would do it. It's not cost effective. You would just instead either knock it down or you'd build another building. So instead we tweaked it, right? With feedback like that, we were able to say, okay, it would only work if they had a stick-built. Uh, probably commercial building on the property as opposed to a barn that was a pole barn. There was more examples, but that's one sort of clear way in which they helped us fix the development scenarios that we gave them. So that they were feasible from the start instead of just being something you had to reject out of hand. The last one, and maybe the most important one, was that. I explained to them the basis for the square footage cap that you've heard about before. We were using thirty-two hundred square feet. As the maximum amount of residential space that you could have for one of these developments. And, uh, it was based on, and, uh, you know, about eighteen hundred and sixty square foot average home in Lewis County. Plus the size of an ADU, add it together and you had thirty-two hundred square feet. Well, in two ways, they challenged that. The first off was one of the banking representatives. He said, you should really do much more. You should do six thousand square feet. Then you could do four fifteen hundred square foot homes. That's going to be something that'll pencil out. Bang, you're in business. You can get a lot of housing that way. Another more subtle way that they challenged it was that the septic designer said. You're saying an average home is eighteen hundred and sixty square feet and never work on a house that's under two thousand square feet anymore. Like, that doesn't sound right. She asked us to check on that. So check on it. We did. Could you go to the next slide, please? If you, using tax data, if you, um, look at average sized houses from eighteen fifty to twenty twenty-one. The average residential space in the houses was about seventeen hundred square feet, which is actually less than I thought it was from the first data look we did. But if you look at only stuff in the modern era, in the post-growth management era. The actual average is above two thousand square feet. So she was exactly right. The moral of the story is that experts are smart. Right? These are people who do this for a living. They know what they're talking about. And, uh, the average size of a house nowadays in Lewis County is larger than we had anticipated. So then the question is, how do you go about citing what to draw, where to draw the line for purposes of this, uh, program? Next slide, please. So what we did was, I went and plotted the average residential space. Of a home by year built every year from nineteen forty till two thousand twenty-one, which is when our data ended. And sure enough, it kind of marches steadily upward, right? It was fifteen hundred way back in the day and then it marched up until about twenty-two hundred by, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and of course, twenty twenty-one is old data now. It's just that, that's what happens to be when the tax data we have stopped and it was, it's, it was hard to get and it's too hard to get again. And so extrapolating out from that, since it's been sort of steadily moving up. We thought, okay, it's now going to be twenty twenty-four and this is going to be twenty twenty-four and beyond. So it makes sense to say by, by, by twenty twenty-four and beyond, it would be more like twenty-three hundred instead of twenty-two hundred. So twenty-three hundred square feet as an average size rural residence in the R D D zone. Plus our thirteen hundred square foot ADU would equal thirty-six hundred square feet. And that is the number I took back to them for the sample development scenarios when we did it in the later sessions. Next slide, please. Now the question is, why not do six thousand square feet like the banker said? Because absolutely he's right. That that would make it a lot easier for these to pencil out based on the math. And also, we totally see things of that impact in Lewis County. There is a house in Toledo that's twelve thousand square feet. And thirty-six hundred square feet is a fraction of the impacts of that single family residence. Also, even more tellingly, we had a custom home builder in the industry work group. And he said, oh yeah, thirty-six hundred square feet is at the, kind of at the low end of the houses I work on. Right? He, they're building houses that are thirty-six hundred square feet in the rural area right now with a shop. So thirty-six hundred square feet is definitely less than the maximum impacts we're seeing in the rural area and why not go for more? And the reason is because Growth Management Act really wants you to have constraints on your rural housing programs to prevent. Urban sprawl in the rural area and to prevent runaway rural growth. And it makes much more sense for a new, frankly, an innovative land program like this one. To tailor its impacts to the average rural dwelling that we're just easily able to accommodate in the rural area with our rural services. As opposed to the maximum level that we can take in the rural area. If this program succeeds and it turns out to produce housing that we can easily serve in the rural area, then in the future, perhaps someone could look at doing more. But for the first one, for the pilot program, if you will. It makes sense to say, okay, we, we know what the average size single family residence is. We know we can serve that level. Let's start there. Next slide, please. All right, here are the sample development scenarios that we brought to them with their help in tweaking them, right? So we had them do a quadplex of four townhomes. That were nine hundred square feet each. We had them do a purchase of a lot that had a small home on it where they then added two twelve hundred square feet manufactured homes, almost like adding two ADUs, right, instead of one. Uh, although they were larger than the, than the existing home, which is something you can't do with ADUs right now. We had, uh, an example where they bought a small home that had a large commercial outbuilding that was stick-built and they converted that into barn dominiums. There was an example where they cited three detached manufactured homes of twelve hundred square feet each on one large lot. There was an example of tiny homes where they cited eight four hundred and fifty square foot tiny homes on one large lot. And then for comparison, almost like a control group. We actually just had them do a single family residence as well. We had them do a thirty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred square foot, a single family residence with a forty by sixty shop. Again, as being at the low end of what the custom home builder said is common for him and plus they all agreed like, oh yeah, forty by sixty shop, that's classic Lewis County. So. And then, uh, we had them do the same single family residence again with that same shop, but inside the shop. They put in an ADU of our maximum standard size, so a, a twelve, uh, twelve hundred square foot, uh, ADU inside that shop. So those were the ones, and I put in red here, one very surprising takeaway that, that I feel like otherwise doesn't get flagged, which is that. Every single one of these things was something that could be done. It was never the case. That the, say the well, really, the person with well drinking experience said, oh yeah, you know, you're really not going to be able to get enough water out of that well. To serve those multiple residences or the septic designer never said. Oh, you're not going to be able to get the drain field on the lot of that size because it's too many residences to work. They never said that. It was always possible to do the development. The only question was how much it would cost to put in the necessary infrastructure and whether it would pencil. I'm sorry, Megan. She's sweating bullets as I'm talking at a million miles an hour. Uh, but I want to make sure we get through this so you can talk for half an hour. Yeah, um, she's recording the meeting. That's really what it comes down to. So. This is a, the reason that this is a big red bullet takeaway is that I think that many, many people in the state of Washington under growth management think that it's impossible. Under the normal regulatory background or other backgrounds to do multiple small units on a rural lot and this showed that that's not true. It's just a question of whether it's feasible, whether it pencils. And whether you can figure out a way to do it consistent with growth management limitations, which is on the whole, an extremely important point to establish for this project. Next slide, please. So now let me sort of take you through at least one example of what they were doing in the room when they did this development. Cause it's kind of cold when you read it in the report, right? So we showed them, this is a real lot in Lewis County, right? It's one forty Texas Lane. It's near Winlock and it, it is a beauty. Right? It's flat. It has no critical areas. It was recently cleared. It, it has a pre-existing beautiful private road that's super like big and has a cul-de-sac. They, the people in the industry group were so shocked, they called us a unicorn. They said, this is going to cost a fortune to buy this lot. It's going to be a hundred and seventy-five grand. It's such a nice lot. Um, it's five acres in size. So this is the one we asked them to test out the family complex on as an easy one, right? You don't have to worry about critical areas. You just, you have a really great lot. So next slide, please. So what we did, it's hard to see, I, I think on the screen, but you, you do. So what we did, it's hard to see, I I think on the screen, but you you do have the report. You can go back and look at the financials if you want. So we said, okay, where do you start? You buy the lot. Then what? They they said, all right, well, first you have to cite your well and storage and they allocated a certain amount of money that they that they would cost to do that. What's next? You're going to pump house for that well because you you're going to have storage, therefore you need to enclose it. What what's next to install a septic system? How much is it going to cost? Talk to the septic designer. She contributed her cost estimate. Okay, what's next? Power. Then driveway and groundwork, then the construction of the quadplex itself. I want to flag for you that the construction of the quadplex itself. Costs over a million dollars because they estimated that it today's costs would be three hundred dollars a square foot to put it in. Now that's more than for a single family residence because it has four kitchens. It has more bathrooms. It has more entryways, all sorts of stuff. But three hundred dollars a square foot was their estimate as a group. And also it matches with some stuff I've heard from other developers doing multifamily work. So I think it's a credible estimate and it is a lot. Uh, that by the way, has nothing to do with it being in a rural area. It's just a cost to build period. Um, they then said, okay, we're going to build a garage. They had some miscellaneous permit fees. I want you to know that they considered. Permit fees to be included in the cost for the individual things like septic and well. And. So this is like miscellaneous additional permitting that they hadn't already captured. Landscaping, stormwater, some uh, you know, things they left for later, like what is it going to cost you to get your loan? You're going to have ongoing payment for your satellite management agency for your groupie well, that sort of stuff altogether. The total was one point five million dollars to build this, which is a lot. I do want you to remember that number because we're going to come back to it later. That's why I took the time to flag it. Next slide, please. Now, for the next ones, I'm going to start speeding up on going through these instead of going through them in detail, but. This is the property for the burnt ridge road one. This is the one where they bought a small existing residence on what is a commercial nursery. Right now, the idea was they then added to detached manufactured homes to this property. Next slide, please. For this one, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but what I want you to see is that it's actually the same basic categories on the left. They had over and over, they had the chance to identify if there were other crap cost categories that we hadn't caught. They had another session where I asked, hey, having reflected on this stuff from last time. Did you see any other cost categories that you think were missing? And in general, the answer was no, right? That they really thought we had sort of crystallized the major cost categories. This one, if you tally it all up, I can't uh, it is about eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. To buy the property and cite the additional two mobile homes. Next slide, please. Uh, I won't even show you the performers on these, just I wanted you to see the properties and see the totals. So this is. Two fourteen Hankin Road, which is outside of Toledo in the rural area. This is one where. Uh, you can't, you can barely see it actually, but at the very top of that sort of Idaho portion of the lot there, um. There's a small home and then underneath that you can see a rust colored square, which is a large commercial building. And the idea was they were going to potentially buy that small home. Actually, I think it was, it was inheriting the small home. And then converting the large commercial building into two condominiums. Um, the total development cost to to buy the property and develop it would be one point four million dollars. But if if as the scenario said, you actually inherited the property. Um, it would be a lot less. They said six hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. You can see that the they estimated the worth of this property is being very high because of its location. It's large acreage and that uh, commercial building, which they thought was worth a lot of money. So. Um, I flag the non including the sale price part because when we talked about financials, we're going to talk about what happens if you already own the property. Next slide, please. This was the example for citing three detached manufactured homes. It's a property uh, near Doty. It's actually west of Doty if I'm not mistaken. Um, but even that property west of Doty is only twenty five minutes commute from Chehalis. And if you think about people who are living in Chehalis and commuting to Olympia to work, that's farther. So it's not unreasonable to think that someone working in or perhaps slightly around Chehalis would consider commuting from Doty. Um, and the cost to cite the three manufactured homes would be eight hundred thousand dollars. Next slide, please. This was our tiny home property on Patty Road, which is up Logan Hill. And it uh, the premise here was that they logged the lot and that they they assumed that the log was break even. Uh, is that not not a good assumption? Right? Well, it was, I actually, I'm just go ahead and go there right now. So the reason, the reason that eight that tiny homes are in there at all. Is because it wasn't clear whether it would pencil, right, to do tiny homes. And if it didn't pencil at all, then maybe you don't have to worry about it, right? But if it does pencil, then you have to make a conscious choice about whether you're going to allow it or not allow it. So it's important to study it. And you will see that it has very interesting implications, the tiny home one. So that's one of the reasons I'm hurrying so much. So I want you to be able to talk about tiny home. All right, so here the cost to put the to. They they assume that you logged a lot and you break even. So then it's sort of an apples apples comparison of the other ones. Uh, once the lot is bare and you've broken even, then the cost to install the eight tiny homes would be nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Next, next slide, please. Finally, we returned to Texas Lane. This is the same property that we did for the quadplex for the single family residence. So they use this property for that thirty six hundred. Square foot, single family residence in the forty by sixty shop. And the cost for that was one point two million dollars. Next slide, please. And then again, if you added the A D U was even more expensive. It was one point three million dollars on the same parcel. So again, that one point five million dollars that it was going to cost to build the house, uh, to build a quadplex doesn't sound quite as. Crazy when you realize that building just the house was going to cost one point two million dollars. Uh, anyway, and that has implications for the financials as well. Next slide. Okay, so. There is lots of details on this slide and it's not because you need to look at those details now. In fact, you have a whole report to to look at them. But the reason I wanted to bring together things that are on different pages in the financials and the report onto one page for it. Right? So here. This is the complex example on Texas Lane. It costs one point five million dollars to to build it based on the budget that they proposed. And this is an analysis that's based on feedback from the uh, construction lender and the mortgage lender in the industry streak, industry work group. The idea was that they gave us the tools to sort of look at this the way an underwriter would. The underwriter would say, okay, great. That's a big project, one point five million dollars. I'm going to need you to put thirty percent equity into that, thirty percent down on that. Uh, so then the bank is then going to charge a fee of one point five percent on the loan amount. So your total loan is going to end up being a million and a little bit. This is a Fannie Mae eligible loan, so it's a thirty year mortgage. And at the time, seven percent was the interest rate. That the mortgage lender and the security state we thought was reasonable. Uh, it's possible that it's a little bit higher now. Uh, but that was the one we were using. So in total, that's going to be a seven thousand dollar a month mortgage, but it's four units. So per unit is seventeen. A hundred eighty five dollars. But um. You cannot just. Get that amount of rent and have that work for your financing, right? The bank is going to want to see that you have. Uh, that your rent covers the debt service according to a certain ratio, which is called the debt service coverage ratio. And that ratio is one point two five. They want to see that your net. Operating income from the property is is one point two five times that per unit amount, and that's twenty two hundred dollars. And that net operating income is the gross rent the from which you deduct operating costs. Vacancy, maintenance, that sort of stuff. So my estimate based on this. Financial table is in the orange square on the lower left there, which is that your gross rent you'd need is twenty six hundred dollars. Well, the problem with this one is that you can see from the rent study on the right. That I looked at several townhomes and what they were renting for per square foot and you're going to get more like thirteen hundred dollars for these townhome units in terms of rent. Below that in small text, uh, I did want to flag that I did a different rent study for four nine hundred square foot detached units that was. Probably more accurate and it was higher. It was a fourteen fifty seven per month rent. But it doesn't really matter thirteen hundred or fourteen hundred. Who cares? It's way less than twenty six hundred dollars. You cannot finance this development. That's one's not going to work. Next slide, please. I did want to show you one that is going to work, right? So Elk Creek Road citing three detached residences. Remember detached stuff, as I pointed out at the top of the presentation. The construction costs for these manufactured homes was lower, so they were more feasible. For Elk Creek Road, it was going to cost eight hundred grand to put in the three condos, uh, three units, excuse me. So if you divide that by three, that'd be about two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars each. So I proposed that a developer does it and they marks them up to three hundred grand. The developer can make money on selling those condos. If the person who has. Buying the condo then puts twenty percent down, it shows that their loan works out, so they have a sixteen hundred dollar mortgage on their condo. They paid sixty thousand dollars down and their mortgage was sixteen hundred dollars a month. Comparable rent for a similar place of similar size in Lewis County through the two methods that I have calculated there, one by townhome rentals. And one by probably a more accurate. Study of a of of stuff based on guidance that the industry group gave me is that that will work, that. You will beat renting the sixteen hundred dollars a month for your mortgage is lower than you would pay for a rent. You would pay either seventeen hundred or even almost nineteen hundred dollars. Uh, otherwise, and so this is someone a condo uh, buyer. Would say, okay, I have to put sixty thousand dollars down, but then my monthly cost is going to be lower than if I were renting and I'm building equity. I'm building wealth. Instead of just paying my money to the landlord. Because it makes financial sense for buyers. This one actually is possible. You want me to stop me, Lori? You're making a face.
Well, I just have to ask, you're saying that they built it for two hundred and sixty six thousand. And then they're going to sell it for three hundred?
Yes.
No.
Not enough?
No, because your your sales and closing costs, you you wouldn't make any money. Why would you do it?
Yeah, well, that's true.
Very true. That's too lot, too little.
Twelve hundred square feet. Because there's three of them, three thirty six hundred dollar uh, square foot cap. Well, she's suggesting that, well, to to build them two sixty seven. So you're suggesting that I need to sell them for more than three.
I guess I was just questioning to build a twelve hundred square foot manufactured house. For two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars seems expensive. Maybe it's right.
Well, the citing just one on a ten acre lot. This was probably more than that by quite a bit.
Well, if you sold it for three hundred, I I figured.
See, well, you've got land costs in here too. He's got land costs and the whole costs and then he just divided it out. Three ways, so they got a third of the five acres in there.
It was ten, actually. It's a ten acre lot.
The third of the ten acres in the two sixty seven, right?
Right. So if you want to see the full pro forma, that's in the report.
I'd have I'd have to look at it, but just based on the two sixty six and the three hundred, no, you wouldn't.
Too small.
Because you you you'd only realize three hundred and seventy thousand. You're not going to do it for.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, two, yeah, two, two hundred and seventy thousand after closing costs. So.
Right, yeah, okay. Well, I could work on that. Right, next slide, please. I think in light of, I'm guessing that when I rework it at a higher thing, it will still work out. Because the nineteen hundred dollars a month rent versus sixteen hundred is a lot of room to give, but I'll check. Um, here's the tiny homes one, just to show you that it exists. The tiny homes one worked as rentals. Um, the. It was nine hundred and twenty thousand to do it. It's eight units. Um, the gross rent needed was about nine hundred bucks. You can see that in the orange length, uh, orange box in the lower left. Uh, you can see that the first rents that I did about townhomes, which was not dependent on the size of units. Showed a much lower rent and that's totally wrong. I want you to know when I did a more sophisticated rent study that you can see depicted there. Um, a four hundred and fifty square foot tiny home is going to rent for about twelve hundred dollars, according to the stuff I saw there, which is a mixture of. Other types of units and that uh, twelve hundred dollars is precisely what the tiny homes on Bishop Road are renting for. So. Um, so I there, you're definitely going to get. More than six hundred for that unit. You're probably going to get twelve and that would mean that it would work as a rental. Is uh, you only need nine hundred, you could get twelve. Uh, again, explaining why the bishop home ones maybe work, although they weren't a rural housing alternative. He's getting twelve hundred for them and they probably cost less than that to build. Um, I do want to point out that if you did these as condos. So that the individual homeowner is getting the benefit of the affordability instead of the landlord getting the benefit of the profit. Um, it could be about twenty seven thousand dollars down and it could be potentially around seven hundred. Something dollars a month as your mortgage costs, which is very affordable. Um, it's possible, uh, Lori, that that is wrong. I don't have the. It's possible that I have the markup on the condos as being too little, so I'll go take a look at that as well. Um, but even so. Whatever, it's it's going to be a lot less than twelve hundred bucks a month to rent. These are very small units, but if you wanted such a small unit, it's pretty affordable. Excellent. Next slide, please. Here's a summary of the ones that I thought worked and didn't work. The stick build family complex never worked, which is why we suggested making a different picture that showed detached manufactured units instead. Um, the other units that had manufactured units were more likely to work. They work better as condos. They certainly worked if you already owned the property or if you had a lot of equity to pop into the property, such as from the sale of an existing home. You know, if you own a home and you sell it, you got equity, you want to put it in your next home, right? Because then you don't pay capital gains. And so they might work for people doing that. Next slide, please. Okay, as if this wasn't complicated enough. I remembered that the building the single family residence was going to cost one point two million dollars. And I said to the group. How in the heck is this working for anybody? How could you ever finance this? And they said, don't forget that most loans, particularly regular mortgages, are not predicated on how much rent the unit is going to offer. Instead, they're predicated on the ability of the person to simply pay back the loan because they have a lot of earning potential. Or they all have a lot of equity that they're investing in the property and so there's security for the lender. And so they said, you know, they like opened my eyes that I needed to pay attention to more than just the rent potential of the property. And so that's where the pirate example comes in. You have an independently wealthy citizen, the pirate, who's coming to a lot of gold bullion and he's thinking about buying a house. He are. And he's wondering about maybe whether he should instead trade up, add on some other units and do an R H A instead. That's why I call this add on financing. They're shiny and new. That's why they have sparkles around them. He are. The question is, how much gold bullion more down will he have to pay and how much more gold bullion down will he have to pay monthly? In exchange for the booty that he will get from increased rent from the units. So that's, that's what this add on financing calculation is. It's like, what does it take a single family residence purchaser? What is it going to do for them if they want to spring for the R H A? Next slide, please. Here's an example of how that played out in Texas Lane, right? So it's going to cost one point two million dollars to put in that house and shop. At twenty percent down, you'd have a sixty six hundred dollar mortgage, which is a very high mortgage. Um, if you compare that to the four, to citing four manufactured how uh, homes, I extrapolated from the Elk Creek example to four units. You put four nine hundred square foot manufactured homes on that property instead. And you did it thirty percent down, you would have to pay, and this is circled in red there, you'd have to pay another forty three thousand dollars down. But your monthly payment would actually go down a lot because it was cheaper to cite four manufactured units. Than it is to actually build that huge house and the shop. And the four units could potentially fetch rent as well. So thi- this is an example of how I could imagine that a wealthy person who was planning on building a house. Might decide instead to spring for these multiple units. Because it could lower their original, their monthly costs, even if they had to put a little bit more down. Um, and they could house their family or other people, um, if they decided to rent them out. Uh, next slide, please. Um, this is one that isn't. So the the Texas lane was unusual in that it just costs so much to build the house that citing the manufactured units was itself just cheaper total. This one, it's not. So I wanted to give you that example as well. This is Elk Creek Road. I extrapolated from the data they gave me as to how much it would cost to cite one. Twelve hundred square foot manufactured home on that ten acre parcel with the cost that they gave me scaled down for one. And it was a lot. It was four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. So if you figure that out, that would be a mortgage of twenty three hundred dollars. That's what the orange box is. So the question is, what happens if they decide to spring for three instead? They're going to do three instead of one. They'd have to pay more. They'd have to have a hundred and fifty three thousand dollars more down. And they'd have to pay eighteen hundred dollars a month more as well on their loan payments, but. They'd have two more twelve hundred square foot units and each of those units could rent at market rate right now for more than eighteen hundred dollars. So theoretically, the first one of those units, they rented it out. Could pay to offset the extra cost. That it costs to have the three units and the second unit, if they rented it out, would get them eighteen hundred dollars in their pocket to defray their monthly mortgage costs. So again, you're seeing a situation in which. If someone was selling a home, for example, and they had a lot of equity to put down. Two hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars of equity to put down. Um, adding the additional units could drastically lower their monthly costs going forward. Provided that they could find people to stay in those places as rent. And also they wouldn't necessarily have to keep all of that. Eighteen hundred dollars in savings themselves. If they rented to their family members, they could charge. Undermarket rent to their family members and they could share that savings. This is where that family compounds thing again seems possible. I also wanted to put out, point out what's in green below the red box. Uh, there's a green shaded area in a green box. That's a very curious thing as well. Instead, say, instead of a single buyer who was thinking about putting the house there and then springing for the extra two and they're going to own all three. Say they have a single buyer who's going to put a house on the thing and they have two other friends or family members that are in the same boat as them. They want to buy a house. They're looking for a more affordable option. If the three of them teamed up and they cited the three. Uh, mobile homes themselves together, like they did a joint loan. They did a joint development where they each ended with one house on a shared lot. Their down payments each compared. Their down payments each compared to the down payment, if you're doing it yourself, would be sixty five hundred dollars less. So in other words, buying their own property and citing their own mobile home. They would have to pay X, Y, and Z. They might have to pay sixty five hundred dollars less down if they did it as part of a team with two of their friends. And their monthly costs might be nine hundred and fifty dollars less than if they bought their own house on their own property. Because big lots are expensive and citing your, and building your own thing is expensive, and they end up sharing some of the costs if they do it together. And that is very interesting because, you know, if you're seeing there, right next to the green shaded area, the monthly mortgage there of thirteen hundred dollars for a twelve hundred square foot manufactured home on a big lot, that might be something people would consider. Now, it's very difficult to.
How do you sell it then if, if one of the three?
Right. That's where I think the family compound thing makes more sense because jointly owning property is really tough stuff. Now, there are cooperative financing mechanisms. We did not study them in great detail for this report. But you could consider having a corporation own it, having, uh, each of the owners own a share, get financing. When you want to leave, you sell your share. There, there are ways you could do it. Uh, but it's, it's more just like to show that in the limited circumstances of family or friends who wanted to join, they own a lot because they wanted to have a family area. It is possible that this would actually be better for them than buying their own homes. So I just thought that was interesting.
Have on four nine hundred foot manufactured homes for a price? Two hundred, two hundred and forty six or something?
Well, I did, I did four as an example in one of the tables. It just wasn't one of the ones, it was.
Well, I just happened to know that the fair special on a nine hundred square foot home was eighty eight thousand. So that's two, three hundred and fifty two thousand for four manufactured.
That's to buy the home, but not to get it cited, not to get it skirted.
Yes, you did it cited. Eighty eight thousand at the fair.
Oh, well, that's.
That was really good deal.
That was much, so the, the.
Bring it to your house, set it up. And, uh, I don't know about skirting. I probably not. Probably not as.
The, the, um, the person who was on the industry straight holder group, one of the realtors had just been involved in a, in a project in which they had cited manufactured homes. And it was like all told for all the stuff you had to do to get it on the property, you know, buy it, deliver it on the property, gravel pad, site it, you know, skirt it, was a hundred and forty grand for that unit.
For one unit.
For one unit. And so she, that was the benchmark they used for multiple units was to just multiply a hundred for, and that was for a, a twelve hundred square foot unit. So if it was smaller, it might be less. It was larger, it might be more. But next slide, please. Okay, this is the summary of all the, of the add-on stuff. I don't want to go over it except for to show you the very rightmost column, which is that even though it costs more money and sometimes a lot more money down to do this. If you were to rent out the additional units, it was always the case that you would end up saving money on the monthly amount. So again, someone with a lot of equity probably, probably from the sale of an existing home or property. They could make a decision that they would want to add more units, and that would potentially lower their, their mortgage costs. You know, by anywhere from two thousand dollars to six thousand dollars, depending upon what it was. And again, if they could either rent out those things at market rate and pocket the difference to reduce their own costs. Or if they were doing it with cooperatively with friends or family, they might charge undermarket rate and share some of that savings in the rightmost column with the other people. Next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, we're, we're in the home stretch here, so we'll have time to discuss a little bit. So the ultimate opinion of this group was that the RHA was plausible and it was desirable. And by that, I mean that they found that you could construct these. It was just a question of whether they would pencil, right? And they perceived that there would be demand. That's why they were desirable. They, especially for family compounds, potentially for some other developments as well. And also they said, hey, this is something new and flexible in the rural area, which we've really not had flexibility before. And people will very much like the addition of more options. They were in favor of us, including in the code. Even though they knew it wasn't a world beater, right? It's, it, it was not going to be really lucrative for developers. I'm not sure they thought it was going to produce a lot of business for them. But they nevertheless thought it was useful to have as an option. Next slide, please. As you saw from the financials, they're not always feasible. Many of them were not feasible. They are less lucrative than traditional city development. They're surely going to be more complicated than traditional city development because you can't just pay to hook into existing services. And so they were most viable when someone already owned the property or had a large quantity of equity to invest. And especially if they were sort of incrementally growing their own property, right? Adding a few units to their own property or adding a few units to the property they were going to buy anyway. They, because of that limitation, they do not seem likely to lead to runaway rural growth. They, they don't seem, in fact, they seem like the type of thing that individual people might decide on an individual basis to do on their properties, as opposed to the type of thing that a large developer would want to do many, many times over in, in, in an effort to make a profit on multiple properties. Next slide, please. The feasible RHAs that we, that seemed uh, that like they could be done would be some small scale condo properties. Sounds like I need to do a little bit more work on that. Redeveloping your own property, owned out right out of a few units, but had potentially small scale, tiny home developments that could produce some, uh, quite affordable units. Add-on units to a home purchase, especially if you had equity. And, um, maybe a cooperative joint purchase in the very rare circumstances where people wanted to jointly own property with multiple homes on it. Next slide. And so I, I posit that you guys could discuss that this actually did demonstrate that this is in a sort of a sweet spot for rural housing, which is that it is a new and flexible option. It could produce some more affordable housing in the county. It doesn't have to be done for quote unquote affordable housing. It could be done for the market, and it could therefore be very, very fancy, be really, really expensive. But it also could produce some affordable units because it's up to the people deciding to do it what they want to do. It is, however, constrained and difficult enough that it's not going to actually lead to a million of these necessarily or, or sprawl. It, it will match on the land use side, the form and impacts of our existing single family residences. And the financial constraints will reinforce that because you probably won't get the proliferation of many dense units because you have to be very careful about when and how you do these. So they make our land use constraints more credible because it's not the case that there, that people will always be gaming them to try to, you know, string together a million of these and, and make profit. Next slide, and that is it, I believe. Yes. Okay, so questions, reactions and stuff for you? I mean, it was really a lot of stuff, but, uh, at least we got twenty minutes to kick it around.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Frank.
It was like drinking from a fire hose, but good stuff. Thank you. So with, um, with a lot size of, say, four or five acres, you know, uh, it's zoned R five. Then does the R five designation go away because you're, you're building these smaller units? Or are you still restricted to, to one residential unit on five acres?
So you would definitely not change the zoning. And I think the proposal is that this would only be available for lots of five acres or larger. So if you have a four acre lot in a five, ten or twenty R D D zone, like, sorry. Right now, at least, as a way to make sure that we're not doing extra damage to the Growth Management Act. We would only want conforming lots, five, ten or twenty acres to be able to do this. And will that zoning designation go away? No, it will not. In fact, by design, it would remain that it's still going to be a five acre lot or a ten acre lot. You're not going to subdivide it. These units that you sort of stuff into the same form that the current single family residence could be in. They will not be able to subdivide the lot, so we retain that large lot. You'll retain open space. You'll have a clustered look. Um, it'll be hopefully easier to serve as a result of that. It'll be easier to serve with well and septic, same thing.
In order, in order, so just a recommendation, in order for your mind to wrap around this concept, you have to decouple minimum lot size from number of residential units. So the R D Ds are minimum lot size, and that's it. Five, ten, twenty, and we wouldn't change that. What we're suggesting is remove the idea that it's one unit or a unit plus ADU from your brain. And insert instead, it's a form, and we don't care how many units you put in it. So as long as it meets that form, that, that thirty six hundred square feet max, as long as it's in one and a quarter acre, as long as it's one driveway, as long as it's just well, group well or septic, we don't care how many units are in it. So if you can pull those two items apart in your head, then it makes it a little bit easier to.
So then you couldn't build a house that's four thousand square feet?
We would never get a, get, oh, go away from what you can do today. You could still do your traditional single family home and ADU. This is an option. If you choose this option, you are then constrained.
So on a four acre parcel, you can still have an ADU then?
Yeah, so the idea is that, um, probably the way this would come out in the regs is that we have a zoning table, right, that says in R D D, like, single family residence permitted. We would add a new entry on the table that says rural housing alternative. And then it's like permitted in R D D lots of five, ten and twenty acres. And then there'd be a section to go look at about what the rules for an R H A are. But it wouldn't take away your right to be able to do a single family residence. And it would take away your right to be able to do an ADU associated with that single family residence. Just be an additional option.
Okay, so a four acre parcel that's in an R D D five could still have an ADU. But they can't do the R H A.
Absolutely. They would not be able to choose R H A, but they could absolutely still develop residential the way that they normally would develop residential.
Thank you.
Jason, what do you think?
What do I think? I've been trying to figure out how to answer that question. I, I have a hard time. Uh, I think what you said is, is true. There's probably not going to be a ton of this. What kind of stands out to me is that you know, they said it was plausible. I don't know how probable it is. You know, some of the concerns you brought up, I had the same things. I, I just cannot imagine a scenario where very many people would choose this option. It would make sense for them. There's so many issues on a practical level for whoever the primary landowner is. And I'm not sure what kind of communities we're going to get in those areas where, where that does work. I think there will be some family compounds, but, and I mean, I, I don't want to poo poo it too much. I'd really appreciate that level of work that you put into it, but I just, I don't see it, don't love it, um, just from a, you know, the smell test of it. I don't, I don't love it. But on a practical level, I just, I don't really see it being something that, I mean, it wouldn't be attractive to me at all. I have a hard time thinking.
Would you be, would you be attracted to the idea of having the guy across the street that has five acres put in the tiny homes? Would that be a problem for you? Would you feel that that's kind of?
Yeah, I mean, that, well, that's why I say on a, on a, you know. Yeah, I, I don't love that part of it, the, the rural character part of it. I don't, I don't love it for that reason. You know, I think that tiny home thing is probably the most probable scenario, and then we're basically just getting a bunch of.
Can I, can I ask a question about the rural character piece? I want to push on this just a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I'm curious about all, all your guys' thoughts about this. What is it about the idea of having tiny homes on the property next to you that doesn't now meet your idea of what that rural character is? What is it that's bothering you about that if they're your neighbor?
Well, yeah, I mean, ultimately, if it's, you know, legal, they can do whatever they want, but I think what, what you know, there's going to be a lot of increased traffic. And you put that many people, um, you know, that many more cars. There's, there's just going to be a lot more of that kind of stuff if they're right across the street from you. If you had one neighbor that had one or two cars that pulled in there once or twice a day. You know, as opposed to, you know, eight units that maybe, you know, a couple of people live in, maybe. Now you're talking about sixteen, twenty cars maybe in there. Coming in and out, it's just, it changes the dynamics quite a bit, I think.
Getting burdened dogs.
Right, all, all those kinds of things. And, you know, just, uh, you know, if you're just driving down the road, I mean, the difference between one, one house back in the, in the woods, like a lot of these places are, you know, long driveways and such. You know, maybe that still happens. Maybe you don't see all these places from the road, but.
Traffic, I mean, I think traffic's a great example. I was curious how much you care if you can see them? Because screening and buffering can take care of the visual.
Yeah, the, yeah, no, I agree. I think, uh, the seeing it part is, um, can be mitigated. So I, I totally agree with that. I mean, it's.
It's a little bit harder to mitigate dogs barking.
Yeah, but, yeah. Right, yeah, you just take, you know, I mean, we're all people and we all come with our own set of issues to everybody around us, right? I mean, nobody likes any, everything that anybody does. And so you just put a lot more people in there. There's, there's more of that, you know, everybody's got their stuff, so. You know, I, I guess that would be that part of it, but just on a, just on a practical level, there's a lot about that that it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, and, and to kind of build on that, what, what, what we've found is when you put a smaller house in to provide kind of a more affordable option. They can't afford it. They can't afford the shop or a garage. Uh, so essentially what you end up with is the stuff, the stuff, you know.
I was, I was going to say something similar. It starts to look like an old trailer park.
Correct.
And that's.
I mean, you can't blame the person because if he can't afford to put in a garage, he's got the lawnmower and the swing and the, you know, the barbecue and the bikes and, you know, you, it's just a fact. And so that, that would just give me a little bit of a pause because that being the most affordable thing, and you'd look at the guy down on Bishop Road, obviously. Um, you know, it, it worked out well for him, but, um, I, I, I would be a little concerned about the unintended consequences of that. That being said, you, you know, you're trying to apply, provide an affordable option. You're fighting the, basically the government that's trying to, uh, serve the master of, uh, climate change. So you, all your numbers are going to be moot in March when the regs change again. And it's not going to be a driveway. I don't think if you're going to put three or four units in there, it's going to be a private road, I would suspect.
I mean, one feature, that was something that the group talked about. So one feature that we are likely going to recommend be part of it is that since these are meant to model the same impacts as a single family residence, that we would treat them as one connection for purposes of that rule.
That'd be a big improvement.
So that at least the R H A itself, it's like one driveway serving the R H A. If it was the third house on, then it still might have to have a private road, but at least the R H A itself is not going to trip that.
Is, uh, this is a question. Is this work that you've done, this gymnastics that we've gone through to try to to find something for rural character? Is this just to meet the need of our percentage of the county allocation or something? Why are we doing this?
No, it's not. And I'll, I'll let Eric answer how we started this conversation, but we did it in advance of the population and housing allocation work. The, the housing allocation component of it, where we have to do the affordable at all levels, is likely going to be met in areas where we can provide sewer. So we're talking about Onalaska and Packwood when we get sewer out there. So no, that's not what this is. I'll let Eric answer the how we began this conversation.
Well, I'm not, I, I'm not entirely sure that will always be true. I think that it's still useful to try to bring like the rural lands into the conversation about the other levels. So for example, the, you know, the tiny home one where you maybe can get rent down to a certain level. I mean, that's the level that's like a seventy five or eighty percent AMI. Uh, that's seventy five or eighty percent of the area median income rent level. And we don't have a lot of options for that anywhere in the county, uh, including in the cities that meet that level. Um, and so I'm not sure it's a bad idea to expand the pie in that regard. But why are we doing this? Well, I mean, before the pandemic, the county was already seeing people saying they were getting squeezed in terms of housing costs. You know, because the prices were rising so much and, including in the rural area, maybe especially in the rural area. And so the, you know, strategic plan from two thousand and, I don't know, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, I can't remember, like directed some work to try to figure out ways to increase the availability, affordability of housing countywide. As a county thing, not directly related to the cities. And it was so like the, the book of business, if you will, was to try to see if there was any way to try and do that in the county area. And then it so happened that then the pandemic happened and there was lots of trouble with housing everywhere and House Bill twelve twenty as a reaction to that. You know, and, uh, a real strong effort to require that counties. You know, and, uh, a real strong effort to require that counties plan for all income segments. But the truth be told is that we had already witnessed over the preceding 10 years that the options for affordable living in the rural area were dwindling. As, you know, single family residences that became expensive, right? They used to be cheap. Now they're expensive, those, those are crowding people out, they're, it's a, it's a form of gentrification, really.
I mean, I have to. To accept your argument, I have to accept the premise that everybody ought to be able to live wherever they want. And that because you don't have a lot, a lot of income, you still ought to be able to live rural. And. I just can't get there, I mean, I really am having.
Can I just, I want to add something to this, sorry, I just want to add one thing to this conversation about living rural. And your choice of getting to live rural or living close to where you work. So we have a county that has a lot of ag land and a lot of forest land and has a lot of people working in it in the rural area, and they are not. Making a lot of income. And if we don't have affordable options for them to live in the rural area, now they are forced to commute. Which adds even more cost burden to them from areas where the, where housing is affordable, so I just want to add in. That, yeah, parts of, part of it is people choosing where they want to live, but part of it is we have a lot of people who already live and work. In a rural area and they're quickly being priced out of the ability to, to live there.
You make a good argument, I want to recognize that, why don't then we propose. Uh, something like. An eight to one on a, on an eight on a five acre, but keep it. Within a thousand feet of an existing U G A or near a Lamrid, so people stayed. In community instead of getting out, I'm not going to be able to get to. Eight on any five acres, put it out there, I mean. I'm okay if the county wants to go that way, I'm not going to be able to get there.
No, I, I think you're, I think the question of geography is one we've, we've discussed, and should we, should we constrain where you can do it?
Like here's a, this is, brings up my, he knows what probably I'm going to say is. I'm on a bunch of committees and we have all this flood plan. And we have men putting roads to the top of a hill over here to get on dry land, dry, dry ground. Because capitalists can see what's happening. But we have dry grounds sitting up here on top of the hill that the county owns. But we're looking at this instead of doing something like, hey, why don't we put a road to the top of the hill? And, and look at a 20 or 30 year plan that makes sense for a town that's going to grow three times. We could put pressure on the city by making decisions like only putting this thing right near a U G A. Or doing something that drove density to where it's supposed to live, excuse me.
You've used the Kinnicott Hill example several times, but that is already happening, they already have a developer who's doing that, I guess I'm confused by.
No, no, it's trickier than that. Right now, as was mentioned by our engineer. All the roads, most of the roads are old logging roads, they went straight up as steep as they could get to make the cut. So everything to the top of the Kinnicott's not going to make it, Tillicum's not going to make it. Uh, Chehalis Valley Road's not going to make it, they're all too steep. So what if somebody, what if the county said, wow. Let's leverage and let's figure out where to put that road, there is a grade that goes right to the top of that hill. And you could put a grade to the top of that hill, and this is the conversation Mindy's had about. You're going to create winners and losers in a, in a community that has in the past let people pick who's going to win and lose. By putting the U G As where we want to go, so it's just, if we're going to look long term, let's look long term. Mindy, you made a really good argument, I want to recognize that, there are people out there that need low cost housing. Put it in a Lamrid or put it somewhere where they can get their traffic and you can park cars, but. Eight people on 40, on five acres, okay, you get the septic out of there, those are quarter acre lots with a bunch of manufactured homes that I can go down and buy or. Park models, right, put, put eight park models at 40,000 bucks a piece, this is a renter's dream, this is a loophole. That scares the crap out of me, I wouldn't be able to.
Let me ask, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to ask a question?
Well, I just want, there are a couple of things I wanted to say, just to get them in the conversation, which is that. Another thing that is worth thinking about is homelessness prevention generally. A huge driver of homelessness across the state is the lack of affordable housing. And Lewis County has a increasing homeless population, probably driven by those same forces, maybe others as well. And when you. If you have all the affordable housing somewhere other than where people live now or grew up. And you make them move. An hour and a half away to get there, you also disconnect them from their social connections that could help them in a time of crisis. So here's an example, you had somebody working at a job in Packwood, they're living in. You know, a rental that ceases to be a rental because. Who knows, they were living in a motel, motel says, forget it, we'd like to actually rent to people who are supposed to live in motels and who are going to go to the park now. So they look around, they don't have a good place to live, they look in Morton, they look in Centralia, you're trying to find a place that's within their budget. If they move to Centralia, which is an hour and a half away, now they don't live by their, maybe their mom or their third grade teacher or whatever. So if a bad thing happens, they don't have a person to go crash with, and they're more likely to need homeless services, that's a real effect. That Public Health and Social Services sees, and so there can be some actual benefit to all of the county. From trying to figure out a way to, to, to provide affordable housing options in locations where people already have roots and connections, because those roots and connections can help them.
And close to homeless services or something.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess the idea would be to try to need them to not need homeless services because they have a place that they can stay.
I guess I'm coming to where you guys are at, I'm moving a little bit your way, but you're still letting me put an eightplex anywhere in the county.
Well.
And I don't know that I can do that.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that, uh. It's certainly the case that the trade off is between, can you come up with something that's affordable and can you simply stomach it in the rural area? And I do want to make sure that I pointed out that you don't, it's not an all or nothing choice. You don't have to say you can allow the eight units that we used as that example, that was designed to see whether it would work, to see whether you would want to grapple with that issue. Right, so you could allow the R H A and put guardrails on it so that it didn't allow eight units on five acres. Or maybe it allowed eight units if it was on 20, but it doesn't allow it if it's on five, you see what I mean? Like you can.
Yeah, that was exactly the question I was going to go to, so in your brain, drop tiny homes from this option entirely, let's not, let's, let's say we don't include them. Now they're not an option. We cap it at four units. And we, we put other caps around it, so it's not that thing. Because we did, we did the tiny home to see what's, well, one, we want to see how far we could go, how many units can we stick on a lot before we trip a water or septic problem? And it turns out you could actually do more, like, we're, we're not there yet. But as Eric was saying, we can, if we want to proceed with this, we get to put our, nobody's done this, we get to put our own guardrails around it. And I, and I think if we do proceed, the fact that it isn't the most. Thing that people want to do is good for us because it makes it easier to get it through G M A. This is not going to lead to, not everybody's going to do this, right? And we probably want to talk about, is there geography where this makes the most sense?
But I don't, I don't, I, I forgot that I had to respond to that too, don't forget that you have to balance that too, even if you say. Well, we want it to go near a U G A because it's more like a U G A than something else, then you have to worry about boxing in the U G A so that it can't properly expand. As needed.
If you can do eight tiny homes on a five, why don't we just allow a mobile home park?
Well, technically we do allow mobile home parks, um, if you can meet density regulations, it's just that. The.
Can I take five acres today in an R D D five and put eight? Mobile homes on there and call it a.
You can't, because under our current zoning and prevailing growth management things, you wouldn't be able to do that.
The other way, why, why don't we do that?
Well, that's, I guess the whole point is, let's put it this way. It's pretty clear that the Growth Management Act prefers single family residences on large lots in rural areas for many reasons. It also allows innovative land uses designed to make the most of it. This is an attempt to follow that allowance, right? To come up with a form that is meant to mimic single family residences impacts, but doesn't, uh. And therefore allows more units, I mean, it's as simple as that, it's, it's like that, that was, that's the core of the idea, you could. If you do a traditional mobile home park that has subdivided spaces, because those are a subdivision under Washington law. Then you've just divided up the five acres into small parcels, which is exactly what they don't want you to do, this at least preserves a large parcel. So that's the.
Um, I think Gretchen wants to, I'm sorry, I think Gretchen unmuted, Gretchen, did you want to say something?
I, I don't quite have my comment together, but I will just say. It might not make sense to a lot of you, but from where I'm sitting. There are people living on very large lots that would love the opportunity to build a couple of extra homes on it for their aging parents. Or their sister, if she gets in, you know, has a divorce and loses her, you know, her and. Your nieces need to come stay, like, it's. Or if you own a business and you want to house some employees. Like it, it, there are so many ways that I can see from where I'm sitting that this makes sense, and if we just. Just simply had the option. I think it would be a real benefit to at least our small community because. We are having a real housing crisis up here and we, our school district. Is one of the higher homeless rates in the entire state, like it's, it's heartbreaking, you guys all heard that. From the, the housing survey that we took, and if we can just even simply add a few more units to the mix that might. Ease that a little bit, it would make a huge difference in our community, so. I, I commend this, I would hate to see this committee hold this up, just because you don't think it makes sense for. You, because you don't want to look at eight extra units across the street, like. Chances are someone in your neighborhood might not do that, but up here, I think it would make a big difference, just to. On a very small numbers level, but as a community, I think. We need all the, you know, out of the box thinking that we can get up here.
Do you think another thing that's different about Packwood is that it has a long history of like. Small, frankly crappy housing options for people doing service industry work. So like, they used to have skid houses, right, they used to have these tiny. Like plywood houses basically that were put on sliders, on skids. And they would move them into position for logging crews, they would live in these tiny little huts and then they would do the logging and then they'd. Move them to the next location, which were basically like mobile homes or tiny houses before they were a thing back in the, before the 40s. So, you know, Packwood has a really different view of what rural housing ought to look like, I think, as compared with most places.
Appreciate the input, Gretchen. I don't disagree, I think. That's that obvious one and maybe why I think there's some common ground here that we're talking about. But I, I haven't heard, heard that we're leaving to come back and get it, what I mean by that is, you're talking Packwood, that seems to be. A community that we could somehow put guardrails, as Mindy said. Around this thing that met your needs. And when I hear about workers out in the woods, you know, that need places to live. They also congregate in the morning and get together in a truck and head places and they need to get to work, so. Again, it just seems like if we did that, we'd make this option where. We want. Where we, where we need the people in Packwood and where people can. Community, but then we wouldn't open it up. To having this happen. If this wouldn't get through this room when we talk about this, because somebody that lives on five acres is going to realize. They could put eight next to them. But again, you know, I'm only one person.
I do agree with her though, that when, when you, I mean, you did, you've done a great job, we all agree. I mean, just the information that you have is, is just stellar that you compiled with your group and everything, so, I mean. You know, we really commend you on that. Uh, but when you were talking about it, I did think that it could be that somebody would say. You know, I'm going to use this for my children to come home. But whether they're going to build a home, they're going to try to build the, or they're going to try to bring in the R V more likely. But definitely a manufactured home would be, um. Would be the second best bet. Uh, but I could see that, that that would be something.
Well, and I guess if they're going to put a compound someplace.
Yeah.
You're stuck by, you're limited by the house that's already there.
Right.
I got 2,700 square feet, I'd like to, I'll put compounded up to 36 too for my kids, but.
Yeah, but if you've got a, a kid that needs a house, you, you know, I could see saying, okay, well, here, just build one over here by me because then you didn't have to go buy the property and. You know.
Minus your 2,700 square feet.
Yeah.
Don't just go build one because he doesn't get to build anything more than. 36 minus is whatever there, and we already have a rule for A D Us or second homes or.
So I want to do a time check really quick because we passed 8 P M and I've been trying really hard to keep our meetings to 8 P M because, but this is such an important conversation. I think Frank hasn't had a chance to say anything yet about this particular topic, would you like to dive into this one before I, before I make a suggestion?
I think we need to talk more about guardrails, okay, I, you know, I think that, you know, in, in all respect to the discussion, I don't. Necessarily favor, you know, eight units across the road from me either, you know, but. On the other hand. We have a problem that we need to address. We have unique problems in different parts of the county. And so I think we need to talk about all of the different options we have for guardrails. To, whether it's geography or some other, you know, whiz bang, you know, formula that you can come up with. That can give us options to say, okay, we're going to propose this for Packwood, we're going to propose that for. Ethel, we're going to propose, you know, and, and come up with some different options rather than just say blanket county wide. You know, we're going to o- open it up and everybody can have eight units on their property and, you know, let's just turn this place into a, you know, one big massive Seattle trailer park. You know, and so I think to, to, to keep rural character and the quality of life that we all moved here. To enjoy, you know, I think we need to really think in terms of guardrails, that's my two bits, where.
And it's not all visual, because the example that you had of, of up on Petit Road. You know, you could clear that out and put eight back in there and, but. The traffic. If the traffic, the schools.
No, I think traffic, traffic's a great, absolutely. So. Frank, turn your microphone back on so we can capture you on the.
You know, I, I'm not discounting what, what you're saying, but I think that visual is, is a significant part, because when somebody drives down a neighborhood. I mean, there's, there's something that happens, pride in neighborhood, people taking care of their property and. You know, and all of, and that's good for property values, but then you get, you know, into a situation where. You know, well, I'll just leave the lawnmower out this week, you know, and then, you know, I'll leave the, the, you know, the.
It changes the character.
Yeah, which changes.
It might still be rural, but it's changed.
So let me, let me make a, let me make a suggestion, because I do want, I. I don't want to stop our conversation, I just want to put a pause on it for right now because we are getting kind of late. Why didn't, I think you guys have brought up fabulous points, um, I think we have a few things we can rework. What I'd like to do is Eric and I to. Come back to you guys with a proposal that includes those guardrails, based on what we've heard you guys say tonight, so, so more thoughts through. At this point, we were just trying to prove if we can make this thing work at all, and I think what we've proved is yes, it does work.
It's brilliant.
And so let's, let's, we'll put our heads together, we'll come up with a solid proposal. And bring that back to you, probably you'll have some choices in there for you guys to make and we'll have another conversation. And then the other thing I would offer for everybody is, you're probably going to keep thinking about this later tonight. Or when you wake up in the morning in the shower, because that's what I do, or the next day, if you have a brilliant thought. Please just shoot it to us, it doesn't have to be just in this meeting, send us your ideas. If you have a guardrail you'd like us to consider, just shoot it on over to us so that we can include that in our next.
Mindy, would you, would you quick?
Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, if you would like to give us a dissertation about, no, I'm kidding.
Because we're, we're not going to see you guys again for like a whole month, so feel free to.
Yeah, yes.
Kind of a summary of what happens now, we're, we're going to talk about this again and then.
We have to get to the point, if we're going to move this forward, we have to get to the point that we have a, a development regulation proposal.
Okay, so we'll make the proposal?
Yes, I mean, we'll vote. You guys always have to vote on development regulations.
And then it goes to the commissioners.
Board of county commissioners.
So we're, I mean, so basically, we're at the concept phase, right? So for the next meeting, I was going to try to write some code that would cover this stuff. But you send us ideas and I, we can do that and we can have a slate of conceptual options for you about. How you could limit it or allow it or whatever, and then when you guys, whatever, you know, makes sense to you. We could then incorporate that in the proposed code and then, then we'd be at the point where we could start getting the public, you know, you can see the code. You can start having people comment on how it's going to work in practice, we actually did publicize this meeting, try to start getting some public input, so.
Yeah.
We have a few folks from, that I recognize from the Packwood area, but, uh, not a lot.
Require a public hearing too.
Yes.
So you can solicit public input.
It'll be.
Early that we haven't actually
Okay.
done any of the regular process yet.
This will then flow right into our normal process. So once we have development regulation proposal, one proposal, not our, we'll bring you some options first. Once we have one development regulation proposal, we will give that to you guys notify for a public hearing. Right? Just like we, then we go into our normal process where we do the normal hearing process. You guys make a recommendation. It then goes on to the Board of County Commissioners for their hearings process and then their decision-making on top of it. So this, this is different because it's so new and complicated that we felt like we needed to really walk through all of the steps.
Yeah.
Lots, yeah. We just, yeah. We just wanted to make sure that we walked through, and this is the exact kind of conversation that we were hoping we would have tonight so that you guys can give us what we need to bring something back to you that with options, it's going to seem more palatable than things are right now. So I think we're at a perfect moment um, to, to come back to you guys with some options, with some proposals, probably be about a month. Do shoot us any ideas or any other concerns you think of or whatever over the next month and we'll get those incorporated in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else for the good of the order, Mindy?
Uh, yeah, I do. Let me bring up my notes. No whole topic. I won't do it. I promise. Um, okay. I wanted to let you guys know that we, um, are setting dates for four public meetings around the comprehensive plan periodic updates. You guys all had your joint session with, um, BOCC last time. I said, we're going to be setting up meetings. The first one's at the Adne Grange on October 23rd at 5:30. Um, we will be setting those up. We'll be advertising them. You guys are welcome to attend. I encourage you to attend if you can. This is a legislative process. If you want to hear what the public has to say, you're welcome to attend everything. I record everything. Not online, but I record everything in writing and get it up, but I just want to let you know that. Um, the other thing, uh, what else? Nope, that's it. That's all I wanted on that. I have another calendar item though. Next meeting um, is a training session. So we're not going to, it's not going to be advertised as a public meeting. It'll just be a training session. We'll do no business at all. We're going to hold it over in our building. Um, in our falling apart room. It'll probably be the last time you're in there.
Mindy, didn't you reserve the lower conference room?
I can't for that date. I know, I forgot that the master gardeners were in here. I was hoping we could be downstairs, but we can't. So we're going to have one last hurrah in the gross building that's falling down. Uh, it will be a potluck so that we can, you know, have some, have some fun together. No, you don't have to actually bake. We fully accept, um, store bought potluck items or drinks if you want to do that. So.
For homemade.
I do, I, I would like to make a request however, for some peach cobbler possibly, because that was really good.
So that next meeting.
Does anybody know they can't be there? Nick on that one, would you, it'd be October 24th?
We will zoom it if, uh, for those like Gretchen, if you're not able to make it all the way down for the training, we will do a Zoom, but it just won't be advertised as a public meeting because it'll just be a, it'd just be a training session. So.
And then we're not having any meetings in November, did you say? And so the next meeting will be in, after that will be in December?
That's right.
Okay. Both meetings in December?
Just one.
Just one.
We only have the training session and one meeting left in December. The last meeting in December, we, we've already canceled.
So December what is the first? My phone went dead, so I can't look at my.
I'm going to look at Megan because I'm assuming she, no? No. Okay, it's okay.
Uh, excuse me, the 12th, December 12th is the second Tuesday in December. The, the fourth one would be the 26th, which is why it's canceled.
We're not going to do that. I will be skiing on December 26th. So if you want to talk about planning stuff, meet me at White Pass. I'll be on the backside. That's where I ski. We can talk there. Up at High Camp over a beer.
All right. Any commissioners have anything for the good of the order? All right. Then do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. All right. Leave the building quickly because the doors are going to be locked.